Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on October 21st. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call. All council members are present with the exception of Tracy, and I believe she's on her way. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nathan, will you lead us in prayer, please?
For Jesus, we thank you so much for tonight and for the opportunity we have to come together and to talk about the future of our community and the needs that we face. Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom or that you would help us to understand what your will is for us and that we would walk in that. And so, Lord, I pray that you would be with us tonight, and we thank you so much for just the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Announcements for this evening. Municipal court for tomorrow at 1:00 PM has been canceled. We have a boards and commissions dinner, October the 25th at 6:00 PM at the church at The Grove. Planning commission meets October the 26th, 6:00 PM at the middle school activity center. Tree board meeting, October the 28th, 6:00 PM, City Hall. Our next council work session is November the 4th, 6:30 PM in our community room. Main Street Commission meeting, November the 9th, 8:00 AM, church at The Grove. The Georgia Initiative for Community Housing meeting is November 9th, also 10:00 AM, and that's a Zoom meeting. Historic preservation meeting, November 9th, 6:00 PM in the community room. Our next council meeting will be November the 16th, 6:30 PM in our community room. And the Walton Municipal Association meeting, November 18th, 7:00 PM, church at The Grove. All right. Next up, we have presentations. I do not believe we have any employee introduction recognition tonight. We have downtown rundown.
This is downtown rundown for October. Everyone is invited to join us for downtown trick-or-treating on October the 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We have most all of the downtown businesses participating and a few trunks from individuals and other businesses that will be set up as well. Immediately following the downtown trick-or-treat, the Social Circle Kiwanis Club will be hosting Chris, John, and Scott in concert in Friendship Park from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. There will be plenty of time in between for families to grab dinner from one of our local restaurants, do a little early Christmas shopping, and spend the evening in our lovely downtown. Our Christmas committee has been in full planning mode for our Christmas event on November 19th in Friendship Park from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. We are looking for vendors to offer a Christmas-themed activity or craft for the kids. There will be visits with Santa, The Grinch, face painting, ornament making, a live nativity, games, and more. The lighting of the tree will kick off our event, and anyone interested in being a vendor can call the welcome center for more information. That's all I have.
Thank you, Amber. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, citizens' requests. I don't know of any tonight. Are there any council requests? Hearing none. Move on to the agenda approval.
We go back to the question.
Yes.
Yes, on Powell Street, I do have a request to add a children's at play sign on Powell Street.
Okay. Mr. City Mayor.
How long does that take? So I can report that.
One more second.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our agenda is approved. Next, we move into a series of public hearings. We have four for this evening. There was a sign-in sheet out by the door for anyone to speak in opposition of or in favor of any of our public hearings. We had only one person to sign in for one of the public hearings. If there's anyone else here that would like to speak, please let me know now. Seeing hearing none, we'll move on to the first public hearing, which is RCON 21-002, Brookstone Office Park Rezone with Conditional Use for Condominium. Ms. Barbara?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. We have an application before you for the Brookstone Office Park for a rezone and a conditional use permit for condominiums. A little background on this is we, the applicant, I think I printed my long sheet, has eight buildings and one male kiosk on the property. Years ago, this was divided up into the buildings, and they were sold. This property consists of 3.6 acres, and like I said, there are eight property owners of the buildings, and the common area is owned by the Brookstone Place Condominium Association now. The city did update their zoning ordinance to include condominiums as a conditional use under O&amp;I, Office Institutional. The conditional use for condominium shall only be granted if the following conditions are satisfied. And all the documents necessary for the compliance with the Georgia Condominium Act have been submitted by the applicant and approved as to form a subdivision of the property under the subdivision regulations of the city. The Georgia condominium has been submitted by the applicant, and we have all the forms as subdivision of the property under our subdivision regulation for the city. They have complied with and can demonstrate the ability to comply with the requirements of the Georgia State Law of Condominium Act. Applicant demonstrates fee simple title for the common area and owned by Brookstone Place Condominium Association. The planning commission held their public hearing on September the 28th, 6:00 PM. The planning commission recommends approval for the Brookstone Place Condominium Association to be rezoned to Office Institutional with a conditional use permit condominium. This will bring the office park into compliance with our zoning ordinance. This is a map of the Brookstone Office Place with eight buildings, and the circle is the mailbox kiosk. That's all I have.
Thank you, Barbara. See applicant here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dabs.
Like to speak, please? Please introduce yourself.
Guy Dabs, representing the Brookstone property owners, and don't have anything to add except for we're glad to get the zoning in compliance, and we appreciate working with the city and the staff.
Thank you, sir. It has been a minute. All right. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, but we have no one here to speak in favor of nor in opposition of this request. So if there are no questions by the city council for the applicant, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council for a vote.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have V21-002-A setback variance, lot 148 at 1254 Morrow Drive in Windsong Subdivision.
Yes, sir. And I would like to announce the applicant couldn't be here tonight. He had transmission, his transmission fell out of his vehicle, so he's stuck on side road. So I'm presenting the Windsong Subdivision setback variance. This is a parcel lot, 148, parcel NS07B148. It's 1254 Morrow Drive. The applicant is required to build an 1,800-square-foot house on this property. The rear setback is 20 feet, and there's a 25-foot stream buffer on this property. And this is requesting to move the front setback. It would be 26.25 instead of 35 feet, which is our standard setback, and a difference of 8.75 feet. This is the property lot, and it shows where the house would sit on this property with meeting the requirements of the 25-foot state water buffer and the 20-foot on the back. It's just pulling the house, the additional footage toward the front. Instead of 35, it would be 26.25 feet. It does, it is in line with the other homes that are already built there. Some of them are setback a little further, but it does not impede the appearance of this subdivision. That's all I have on that one.
Any questions for Barbara on this one? I believe you said the applicant's not here.
Yes, sir. Mr. Logan could not be here. He called, I called him, and we were talking, and he was on his way, but his transmission fell out, so he couldn't get anybody to replace him at that short a time to get here.
Okay. Same as the other. There is no one here to speak in favor of nor against this public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing and then immediately close it, bring it to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Steve Shelton, second from Tracy Price. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. I might get you all out of here to see the Braves game before it's over. Item number three, public hearing number three, Sub P21-002, Connor Springs Preliminary Plan Review.
Yes, sir. This is a, we're in the preliminary stage. This is a three-step process, a rezone, sketch plan, preliminary plan. We are at the preliminary plan stage, and the staff and the city engineers have reviewed the preliminary plan relative to the subdivision requirements, and the submitted preliminary plan appears to include the information required for a preliminary plan subdivision. Our fire chief, Zadel, has reviewed the preliminary plan for Connor Springs and had several comments. They were concerning the fire department, and these concerns have been addressed and they have been submitted on an updated drawing of the plat. The updated drawing was submitted to the planning commission. The wastewater superintendent stated that we are assuming the developer will reroute the existing eight-inch sewer line on the property, so that section of pipe would be upsized to handle the current flow from the downtown area plus the new flow from the subdivision. The sanitary, let me go back. The planning commission recommended that the streets be widened to 26 feet. A sewer line will be needed to be relocated, and they have agreed to upsize that to a 10-inch coming off Spring Street in order to carry the current flow in the downtown area in the new subdivision lots. The sanitary sewer will be needed to be extended to lot 73 for the service tap. That was a little short on our map. All the utilities will be underground, and this is the site drawing of the property where it's located. It's 46 acres. Entrance will be off Spring Street and off Kane Avenue, off Cannon. So the property, like I said, has been rezoned to a residential medium density, and this is our zoning map showing that the surrounding area is zoned RMD or AG. So you have to the north, RMD, to the east, RMD, to the west, RMD. So this would fit in our future land use map. This would fit in our area. So the comprehensive plan shows that this is in the neighborhood character area, and that would fit in with the residential medium density zoning. This is the preliminary plan that was presented to us. With the road, it now is over a little bit, so all the lots will be on the opposite, well, lots will be on both sides of the road and not just on one side. So that little road coming off Kane, they did change that a little bit since the planning commission, and it meets the standards. It will be 26 feet wide. The cul-de-sac radius is going to stay the same for the fire trucks so they can turn around. This is going to be done in three phases. Phase one is going to be in the boundary of the purple. It'll have 26 lots. Phase two, boundary's in the yellow. That's down toward Kane and Cannon, have 36 lots. And phase three will have a boundary in red. That's the remaining 49 lots. Connor Springs subdivision agreed to our ordinance 2021-9. It lists the 46-acre tract described in Exhibit A. It's hereby zoned residential medium density, and it's subject to the conditions of the ordinance of 2021-9. This is the location of the two model homes. One is in phase one, and one is in phase two. Our ordinance requires that if they would like to build model homes, that this is the time they would get those approved so that they wouldn't have to come back to actually have a model home in phase one and phase two once the infrastructure and everything's complete. This is a site plan drawing of showing the house driveway, and it shows that it is big enough to actually have a storage building of about a 12 by 20 in the back property line and still stay in the building lot lines. This is one of the model homes, the Jericho would be built in one, in phase one, I believe. And then the second one is the Tucker would be built in phase two. The proposed subdivision will generate about 84 AM peak hour trips, 118 PM peak hour trips, and 11:45 weekday trips. And that's all I have.
Kevin, I know you're here. Would you like to speak?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Kevin Seifert. I'm with Pacific Group. We are the applicant for this preliminary plat for our Connor Springs subdivision. We've spent a lot of time working through the rezoning and sketch plat processes, as Barbara mentioned, and are excited to be here tonight for this preliminary plat step. We ask that you vote to approve this preliminary plat tonight because we are in substantial compliance with the city's code of ordinances and have addressed all of staff's comments regarding the submittal. And we also ask that you vote to approve the two model home lots as depicted on the model home exhibit that we have submitted. The planning commission recommended approval on both the preliminary plat and the model home lots, conditioned that the model home permits cannot be issued until we've actually submitted the final plat in which they reside in. And so again, we just ask that you vote to approve both actions tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right. Hearing none. Open the public hearing. There is no one here to speak in favor of nor against this public hearing, so I'll bring it back to the council for... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Can you come to the mic, please?
I just have a whole mic here. We're recording this. Hold on, please.
Could you state your name, please?
William Bryant.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Like I said, this is the first time I've heard of a meeting for this, so I'm here with about 500 questions. But right behind my house, I don't really want two-story place, you know, overlooking my property, for one thing. I have concerns about the streets and the safety. I live right over, on the other side of that little hill, there's, every day, there's hundreds of cars basically going through there, way over the speed limit. There's still 15, 20 tractor trailers that aren't any supposed to be down there on that road. I mean, it's a small road.
Are you talking about Spring Street or Cannon?
Cannon. There's, there's several small kids that live right there. By the time they clear top of that hill, I've almost been hit dozens of times because you can't see my driveway from coming over the top of that hill till it's basically too late. So this is some of the questions I have.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. Just mainly, I don't want two-story houses right behind me, and I'm worried about the street, it's in traffic, and my neighbor has two small kids, and I'd like to know more about it. You've all already had meetings and approved a bunch of stuff already, so I guess I'm left out on that part, so.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Thank you for speaking. Kevin, would you like to address any of those remarks?
All right. Talk with him.
Speak with us.
Well, I'll just go ahead and let him know. Yes, we met on the way in tonight, and I've given him my contact info, and we talked about the fence that's required on the rear. I did have, I mentioned the one-story and two-story homes are allowed, and each have different varying minimum square footages. You know, I think he's directly behind what's proposed, lot 13. I would venture to say if it was the desire of this board or the council, we would be open to condition that one lot to a one-story to help Mr. Bryant out if that was needed.
Doesn't that property slope off right there behind those houses? Didn't it make a slope towards the field, the open field?
And Mr. Bryant might know specifically behind his house better, but I do have some topo here.
Is it still flat right there, Mr. Bryant, or does it, Mr. Bryant, or does it slope off? The property behind your house, does it slope off?
Yeah. So I think to your point, any house built will be below, so even if it was two-story, it may only feel...
It may feel. That's what I was thinking.
It may already feel not that tall.
Yeah, because you already got a, you got a setback that you got to meet.
We do, and I'm looking at the topo. It does fall away in horizontally to the side of his house if he was looking straight back. But yeah, I think in the end, of course, we'll want to work, we'll work with him through the process, but as mentioned, if that's required, we'd be willing.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
All right.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion or motion, keeping in mind the conditions that have been, already been established on it if you want to add or take away any of those.
I'll make a motion to approve, and if Kevin wants to do whatever he wants to do with lot 13 to help Mr. Bryant, then that's between them.
I also want to add that, do we have any children's at play sign on Cannon Drive?
I'd say, oh, we have the children's at play sign on Cannon Drive. Do both. We can put the speed trailer there and also the children's play signs. That's no problem? Yeah, we can do that. It's no problem.
Okay. So those are the city requirements. We have no more requirements or conditions for Kevin. Is there a second for Steve's motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Our final public hearing, item number four, RS 21-004, Alcova Drive Rezone from AG to R15 with 30 lots with a sketch plan review. Barbara?
Yes, sir. This is Reliant Homes is the applicant for this 100-acre tract on Alcova. The owners are Wolf Investments, but Reliant Homes is their representative to develop this 30-lot subdivision. The property is currently zoned agricultural. Application is to rezone the residential medium, single-family district of R15. The property to the south is zoned AG. Property to the north is zoned R15. Property to the east is zoned AG, and property to the west is zoned R25. R15 zoning requires a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet and a minimum dwelling unit size of 1,800 square feet. The setbacks are 35 on the front, on the interior road, 15 on the side, 20 on the rear. The subdivision will have a total of 30 lots, the smallest lot being 1.03 acres, and the largest lot in the back is 55.1. This is our future land use map. This shows the site on the little yellow long narrow is the neighborhood character area. This is the proposed sketch plan of showing the first 29 lots at the front, which the numbers go around a little different. And then the second picture will show the large lot, and that is the 55 acres. I think they, we have heard that they was wanting to ask for easement going across the front of that property, that if we ever got back to the water line being that far back, they would have access to that property. The planning commission held their public hearing September the 28th. The planning commission approved to recommend to mayor and council approval of the rezone from AG to R15 with sketch plan for the subdivision on Alcova Drive. These did have conditions that the planning commission recommended to place on this subdivision, and they're pretty much the same kind of conditions they placed on Connor Springs, with the roads being 26 feet wide. And I can't remember all the ones they did, didn't include that. Apologize for that. But we do have about, maybe about 10. You got them. Ned's got them with him, so he'll read those off to us this afternoon and what they agreed to with the planning commission. They did recommend that those be approved. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Ned, before you speak, I would like to make one correction to the item number three, the Connor Springs Preliminary Plan Review that we did. I'll ask if that motion also included the two model homes.
It included everything that they asked for, which the model homes was in there.
Okay. Okay. Just want to make sure that was, and those aren't until the final plat is...
Can you get going through the plats?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Ned?
My name is Ned Butler. I represent Reliant Homes. Would like to institute our constitutional right of any assertion or denial of rezoning would violate the applicant's constitutional rights equal protection due process. As Barbara said, we come back after our last meeting, reduce the lot count from 92 lots to 30 lots, so we have the single access with no variance needed for dual access. I will read through the conditions we went through with the planning and zoning that they asked for that we agreed to. The same elevation shall not be built within two lots on either side of the home nor on the lot directly across the street and within two lots of either side of that lot. So in essence, there will be a different elevation of every home within three lots of each other. Exterior homes to be brick, stone, or cement siding, cedar, or shake. No vinyl siding to be used. There will be no above-ground pools, no window air conditioning units. Each home will have a garage with a minimum of 440 square feet. A water table of brick or stone to be a minimum of 18 inches in height will be required on the front and the sides of the home. The developer will establish an HOA and cause a declaration of covenants and restrictions to be recorded, subjecting all 100 acres to the HOA, and maintain open spaces and retention ponds. Each home will contain a minimum of 15% clear glazing windows and doors on the front elevation, and all plumbing vents, roof vents will be located on the rear elevation of the home. So I think the plan that we have brought back before the council is in much more conformance with the code, and we are asking for approval of that sketch plan and rezone, and I'd like to reserve any remaining time to answer any questions or rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Butler?
On the, on the large lot that I carry at the very back, do you have any restrictions on that lot where it can't be subdivided so this will not be outside of the ordinance?
It'll be a part of the HOA covenants which has a restriction. It can't be subdivided, and I would assume any subdivision of that lot would have to come back before this council. And it would put it over 30 lots, so if they don't do an extra, get an extra access point, it couldn't be approved because it violates your code. it couldn't be approved because it violates your code.
Are y'all looping the water line?
We're attempting to find an access point to do so.
Anything else? Anyone? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody to speak for or against? Actually, Ned, you had signed up to speak for, and I'm...
I'm sure I had to, right?
That's okay, I think you already have, so we'll, we'll leave it at that. No one signed up to speak against, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and action.
I got, I got another question, is, are you running gas in here? Or is the city going to run gas, or there's going to be gas on?
There will be gas, and it's shown on the plan, it will loop around both sides of the road.
Any more questions, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Steve Shelton, second from Tyson Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes for rezoned R15 and the sketch plan review. All right, next up on our agenda are the financial statements.
Are they going to come up? Thank you. All right, so these are our preliminary financial statements for June 2021. Our general fund revenues at this time are at 106.45. This time last year, we were at 95.69. Our overall expenses are at 95.31, of that 78.14 is capital, and 96.07 is operating. This time last year, we were at an overall of 96.94. For our water fund, our revenues are at 80.77, of that is GFA receivables at 45.63%, and operating receivables of 101.71. This time last year, we were at 64.73 overall. Our expenses overall are at 81.42, of that 79% is capital, and 83.41% is operating. This time last year, we were at 50.07. For our gas fund, we are at 97.08% of our revenue. This time last year, we were at 87.04 for our expenses. We are at 104.34 overall, which is 100% of our capital, and 105.29% of gas. Just to point out that that is due to purchase of gas for resale, in which case we have offsetting revenue to account for that. In our solid waste fund, we are at 104% of revenue. This time last year, we were at 90.9% of expenses. We are at 85.71, and this time last year, we were at 83.13. Now for our September financials, we should be approximately at 25%, with it being the September financials. Of that, our general fund revenue is at 13.32%, this time last year, we were at 17.05. Our expenses are at 25.09% overall, of that 52.34% is capital, and 24.31% is operating expenses. This time last year, we were at 26.02. For our water fund, we are at 25.21%, of that $0 have been received for GFA at this time. So we are at 30.74% of our normal revenue. This time last year, we were at 15.85%. Our expenses are overall at 15.85%, of that 10.41% is capital, and 21.8% is operating. This time last year, we were at 34.01. In our gas fund revenues, we are at 19.63, this time last year, 15.33. Our, our overall expenses at 22.33%, our capital expenses at 57.8, and our operating expenses at 18.94%. This time last year, we were at 22.77. And for solid waste, our revenue is at 25.43%, this time last year at 24.79, and our expenses are at 17.37, this time last year at 16.46. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer on either June or September? If not, I'll entertain a motion for both of those financial statements.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item up, consent agenda. Eric, if you will just lead us through those.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We have 13 items on the consent agenda this evening. Item one is the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting of September 21st, 2021. Item number two is the minutes of the executive session on September 21st, 2021. Item three is the minutes of the mayor and council work session on October 7th, 2021. Item four is executive session minutes from October 7th, 2021. Item five is consideration of a resolution to, for the solid waste management plan, and this is a resolution adopting the, the region-wide solid waste management plan that was developed by the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, and it's something that is required for us to approve every five to ten, every five years or so. Next item is consideration of the G dot drug and alcohol policy update for our section 5311 transit, and this is an approval of the grant budget request that we receive annually from G dot to operate the transit system. We are submitting this now in order to get into their annual state appropriations process, and we are requesting $114,000, which will require a $57,000 match from the city. Actually, that was for the, I'm sorry, that was for the, for the budget for section 5311. I skipped consideration of the G dot drug and alcohol policy update for section 5311 transit. That's essentially the same policy we have now. We are simply adding opioid testing into the area, into the items that are being tested. Item eight is, let's see, that's my thing here. Yeah, item eight is a consideration of approval for a new checking account for the hotel motel tax at Pinnacle Bank. We are now collecting some hotel motel taxes, and we simply just need to create a bank account with authorized users for that account. Item nine is consideration of an ordinance to correct inconsistency in the code for city manager spending limits. There's one section of the code that says the city manager spending limits is $2,600, there's another section of the code that's $25,000, so this will clarify the two so they're consistent with each other at $25,000. Item number 10 is a clarification of previous council action on off-street parking in Laurel Oaks. Late last year, the council approved no parking for a portion of Laurel Oaks on Richmond, and when it got implemented, it was a little unclear in how it got implemented in that the no parking sign was only for the first 300 feet as you enter in on Richmond, and this will clarify that the council's intended action was for the entire right side of Richmond.
Richmond and Laurel Lane.
Richmond and Laurel Lane, yes. Item 11 is consideration of amendment to the alcohol ordinance for downtown beer and wine amended license. We have actually had a request from a beauty shop here who wants to offer wine for some of their clients who are there for several hours for a, for hair appointment, and this will allow them to serve, serve wine, and they will also have to follow the other state guidelines where you get the license. Item 11, item 12 is consideration of bid award for Goodyear and Vine Pump Station Elimination Sewer Project. This will award a, the bid $1,518,000, $518,000 to Mid-South Builders, and authorize the mayor to execute contract documents, and this particular action will also eliminate the Carver Pump Station Force Main Elimination Project from the fiscal year '22 budget, and it will also shift the Clover Drive to Windsong Water Main replacement to next year with a balance of $57,000, $57,314 needed to complete this project appropriated from water and sewer fund reserves. And the last item on the consent agenda this evening is consideration of the bid award for CDBG sanitary sewer project. This will award the bid to RDJE Incorporated in the amount of $1,516,386, with additional funding in the amount of $150,000 appropriated from the water and sewer fund balance, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Eric. Any, any questions, comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion from Tracy, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it, but I want to make sure that on the Laurel Oaks, on the Laurel Oaks subdivision thing, that the parking on the side of the road is for all roads in Laurel Oaks, it's not, not just for those two, it's for the other, the other roads in there also. Second.
It's saying in here that... Yeah. Yeah, when it was presented at the work session, it was strictly for Richmond, but, you know, the reason why we're...
They put the signs up on, on both roads.
Well, the reason why we're here tonight is to get clarification, to officially codify it, so now's the time to add Laurel Lane if you want to.
Yeah, Laurel Lane, like I said, the problem is with all the roads in there because they're so narrow, and the fire truck, if they, when they park on side of the road, the homeowners can't even get home. So that's why we want to, that's why we done it, moved it all to one side. So it needs to be all roads.
I'll ask our attorneys, is it appropriate to pull item 10 out and redo that?
Yeah, it is appropriate to take it off the consent agenda and act on it separately.
Okay.
Will you amend your motion, Tracy?
Do I need to amend my motion to...
Yeah, just...
To approve the consent agenda, the second, you seconded that. The objection was to take one item off of the consent agenda, which was the road issue, and I, and I think the motion is ready to be voted on without the road. It'll come up as a separate item after, it's new business after the consent.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and removing the Laurel Oaks to extend no parking for the length of Laurel Lane and Richmond Avenue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's take up item number 10 under old business. That motion would be clarify no parking for the length of Laurel Lane, Richmond, Richmond Drive, is it Drive or Avenue, Steve?
Richmond Drive.
Richmond Drive, and then also name the other roads that are included in that. Come on, Steve, you live there, you should know.
Ashland Court is one of them, and I don't know what the other one is. Manchester?
Here, I can pull it up on Google Maps here.
Can we just say, have it all, all the streets within the Laurel Oaks subdivision?
Yeah. It'll work.
Okay.
From the right side. No parking.
No parking on the right, it's all parking on the left.
That's in the entire Laurel Oaks subdivision.
Okay, that's in the form of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Who made the move?
I thought you did, Steve.
I'll make it.
Okay. I, I guess I stated it, if you want to, if you want to restate it or just say what he said.
That's good, man.
Okay. All right, motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nathan Boyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, old business, I don't know of any, new business, none there. I'll ask our city attorneys if we need an executive session.
We need an executive session. How we have some Florida in category, like, first...
Let me ask the question before we go into executive session, because I talked to Eric about this other day, and I forgot to say it under the council request. Where, where do we stand on the South Cherokee Road where, at Spring Street? David Condon?
Well, we're, we have cleared all our legal issues. And, and I'll be honest, I was best to be taken to say it for what I have to say.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation, personnel, real estate.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank y'all.
Thank you, folks.